Monday, September 28th. Board of Selectmen's meeting, could you please rise for the Bledge of Allegiance? Hold on, I got one more. Get the gavel.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Priest, I believe you have something for us to read.
Yes, sir. Thank you. To Governor Biden's 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open law, general law, chapter 30A, section 20, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the Town of Burlington Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. Now, in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen and/or review this meeting while in progress as broadcast on the government full access television, government coverage Facebook Live page, or by using the link provided in the agenda for a WebEx virtual meeting, or via phone at 408-418-9388, meeting number 173-545-9788. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment by commenting on the government coverage Facebook Live page, the chat function on the WebEx virtual meeting, or via telephone at 781-270-1635. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sagorino, first item on the agenda, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Selectmen Priest will be monitoring the comments on Facebook Live and WebEx Chat and I'll monitor the phone line at 781-270-1635. We do have a couple of public hearings tonight. Just as a reminder to the board, all votes will be required to be done by roll call for virtual meetings, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, just checking to see if Melissa has logged in yet. Mr. Chairman, can we move on to item 484, waiting for Melissa to log in for the first item.
Absolutely. It's a discussion and approval, Paul. Go right ahead, start out with it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a couple of updates on the town meeting. As the board is aware, Wednesday evening, town meeting will be held in a hybrid format through WebEx with some limited seating available at the high school. I also wanted to update the board on an item that you had previously voted. We have had some positive movement in our discussions with the responsible bodies noted in Article Six, which was the 1/4 dioxane legal action. The board had previously voted to approve this, but I would ask that we vote to postpone it at this point in time. We will update the board at our next executive session to continue the discussion of our legal strategy as it relates to this item. So if I could please ask for the board to re-vote Article Six, and I'm requesting a vote to indefinitely postpone that article.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second by Jimmy. Okay, gentlemen, we're going to go through a roll call vote. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. 500.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also believe we do have some proponents of Article Seven here within the WebEx meeting, and if I'm not mistaken, I believe someone would wish to address the board. I know that we offered a few minutes for the proponents to make their case to the board on this item. Sherry, will you be speaking?
Hi, good night. I didn't know I'd have the opportunity to actually speak and to make remarks, so thank you for the opportunity again. Hopefully you've been able to follow the conversation from having been down, especially during the summer. We have had, especially since the July time period, an increased community interest in really accelerating the staffing process for a dedicated full-time director of Barlow School Equity Inclusion to support the needs in our schools. This need was first elevated back in 2016, and the last two fiscal years, this potential role was considered for process for budgeting at the district level, but due to trade-offs and competing concerns, it didn't make it into the final operating plan. So now, even within the context of the pandemic, we're seeing that we have increased vulnerabilities and insecurities within our community, and it's especially important even now for us to make sure that we're ensuring that our students get equitable access and that we have equitable practices across our town and our community. So with this in mind, that we have seen a tremendous amount of outreach and numbers in the community, you know, face-based, community members, parents, educators, we're really asking us to bring this concern to the legislative body and to see if we can secure an amount of funds that will allow the schools to hire someone for this position in advance of fiscal year 2022. So hopefully you've been able to see some of the videos that were posted on the town meeting site, and try to give some visibility to what this would entail. This position would also make sure that we can have more systematic practices, everything from ordering, existing practices, curriculum, development, incident response, brand, training, a whole suite of activities that is really embedded in the action plan that was developed by our Burlington Public Schools Equity Committee. The Equity Committee is composed of students, administrators, teachers, guidance counselors, and they've already defined that being able to really implement the action plan to its fullness, we really do need a dedicated full-time professional to do that. On its merits, we seem to have a tremendous amount of funding from the community and also members of the schools. The concern has been a financial one. We make the case that this is really a value-based decision and that we do have the needs that we should deploy to make sure this prioritized need is really provided to our community at this time. And so thank you for just giving me a couple of moments to make remarks. And the other proponents are on the line at this time. Thank you so much for the consideration.
Thank you very much. Sherry, are you out there? Would you like to speak on this?
Thank you, I am out here, but I'm in the auditorium at the training session, so I deferred to Shafan to let her speak. Thanks.
Okay, all right. Okay, I know you were very big on this from the beginning.
I'm listening in, and I'll make my comments at town meeting. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you, Sherry. Gentlemen, let's go through it. Does anybody have any comments on this? Would you like to speak on this? Start with Bob, anything?
Yeah, yeah, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to everybody who's online and to everybody that's watching this. I don't think that there's many, if any, people in town who don't agree with this. But as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I've got to look at some additional things when it comes to voting yes or no on something. And we have a $2 million deficit that we're trying to make up, both the school and the town, and that's $2 million so far. I just, I think, as great as the idea is, and, you know, timing-wise, it's perfect because of everything that's going on in the world, but timing-wise, it's also the worst time because financially, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I also have to take that into consideration. I watched Ways and Means the other night, and I saw how there were seven members who are in the same position. They agree with this. They think it's needed, and it's a good thing, but financially, I mean, adding $81,000 to a school budget when we've just asked them to take $350,000 out of their budget, I don't think is the right action. Now, having said that, there's an awful lot of people, I went through that whole list, Shafan, of all the people who are involved, and I would feel good if maybe you took all of those people in the committee that you have and created a working committee to start the process of doing all those things on the list that you have to do, so that this time next year, we can vote on this. Hopefully, this will be all behind us, the financial issues, and I would be the first to vote yes and support this. But maybe a volunteer, I mean, Ways and Means is a volunteer organization, and they don't get paid. Maybe the school could start with a volunteer group from all of those people that you have with you, and I know you have a lot more people with you than were listed there, including at least myself. Start the process that, or continue the process that you've already started, so that this time next year, you've got this snowball going down the hill at a good speed, and you can bring in someone who isn't going to be overwhelmed with the amount of work coming out of the gate. I support what you're doing, I support all of this, but I have issues because of the financial part of that, and I apologize for that, but that's where I stand. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to all the proponents for being here tonight. That's much appreciated, and Shafan, thank you for taking a minute to speak on this. And I know Sherry and I had a conversation, and, you know, I think you're going to hear the same thing from everybody, you know, tonight, is, you know, we all support this, and we're also also concerned, you know, with our position to ensure, you know, the financials of the community maintain, you know, during such a difficult, you know, period. And, you know, the question then becomes is, how do you put a dollar sign on our values? You know, and how do you even begin to, you know, pick and choose, you know, what to move forward with, what not to move forward with? You know, I don't want to speak out of term, but I feel comfortable in saying this board supports what you're doing, and, you know, we're moving forward with the subcommittee to begin exploring things on a much, you know, town-wide, you know, scale, you know, because we do believe that, you know, inclusion and equality is important. You know, my wife made a point of saying that, you know, no matter who you are, you know, and I saw an email from Mr. Speho, and I hope he doesn't mind me, you know, calling him out, you know, that, you know, we've all experienced, you know, some level of, you know, bullying or inequality or, you know, disclusion, if you will, at some point in our lives, and it's not fair. You know, I support this. You know, I agree with Bob with his concerns around the funding. I just, you know, it's a tough move forward, and I'm very curious to see how Town Meeting feels about this, for sure. But thank you very much for coming tonight and presenting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Runyon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I too would like to, I want to thank Michael Speho for sharing some of his personal experiences he had. But, you know, on this one, again, I'm pretty much of a budget hawk, as a lot of you guys know, and especially, especially during these uncertain times. I would like to think that, you know, these topics are something that should be not only taught in school, but they should be taught at home as well, I would like to think. I don't know why we couldn't just introduce into the curriculum a program perhaps in the health department or other classes, social science or something like that, rather than adding additional staff for this. I think it's, I think it's something that, you know, needs to be addressed and should be addressed, but I'd like to, I'd like to use the existing staff we have to do that. We don't usually chime in on certain warrant articles that are out of our jurisdiction, so I don't necessarily care to vote on this this evening, but I just wanted to share some of my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Michael. Are you all set, Mike? Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Shafan, if I'm wrong with this, please correct me, but my understanding is that the $81,000 is for six months only, which, again, I'm going to echo what everybody said, it's strictly financial for me. I am behind the content and the need for this 101% or 110%. And believe me, if you do form a committee, I want to be on it, I'll run with a full head of steam. But when we're hearing 2022 could be worse than 2021, it's strictly financial would be the only reason why I hesitate at letting this go forward. Again, I think, I love the idea. I think it's awesome. I want to be part of it, but as Selectman Hogan stated, we look at several other departments, numerous other departments, all of the departments, and we've had to trim them. And I think it would be unfair to tell every department to trim, 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 and trim, cut, cut, and cut, and just move forward on something that's going to impact us financially. So, again, I support it 1,000%. Let's put it that way. I want to be involved with this. Sherry can probably explain to you why I feel that need, but strictly financial, I, again, it'll be Town Meeting's decision, but I do have issues, an issue with the financial piece of this, and that's about it.
Thank you, Jimmy. Sherry, you sent the message, you'd like to speak?
Thank you, yes. I'm sorry, I'm trying to do two things at once, it's probably not a good idea, but I stepped outside of the auditorium, I've been trying to weigh in on that for Town Meeting as well, too. So I just wanted to address a couple of comments, if I could, as you correctly said, I've been involved in this for a little bit of time and very passionate, to Mr. Hogan's comments about perhaps, you know, forming a task force or a group of members that, you know, are behind this. That has been done, the schools have a diversity equity committee. That's why this all has come to the forefront now, because that committee has been working on this for quite some time. And this is, this is the here and the now, because they've been doing the work they have been doing. And to address a couple of other comments, and I can't remember who stated them about, you know, in-house, and the curriculum, and perhaps doing it from that aspect, is the reason the committee has been formed is because we want someone with experience, and the folks in-house don't have the experience that a director position would have. We need someone to oversee all the different aspects, and there's many different aspects of inclusion and equity and diversity. The systems that are in place of how to teach the curriculum, the, you know, discipline actions that need to be addressed, incident reporting, there's so many different aspects of this that, you know, in-house guidance counselors or, you know, current administrators, this is not a extra role that you can just put on to someone. So, and that's been talked about for the last couple of years, and that's what this committee has come forward with, this action plan, and this is the start of, you know, the culmination of one part of their action plan. So I just wanted to address that, and also to Mr. Priest's comment about, this is a money issue, I understand, and yes, this is, you know, horrible financial times to be asking this, but this is a value that this community needs to address, and what does our community want to say about ourselves? That the biotech industries, they're hiring positions like this, they want to be in a community, we're attracting biotech, we want these corporations here, and these corporations want to be in a town that is inclusive of all. So it's a value that we are, need to make, and that's what Town Meeting will do, and we'll have the discussion. So I just wanted to make those couple of comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you, Sherry.
Okay, gentlemen, I think that's about it for that, for that poll. It's not, it's not up for a vote on this, which is open for discussion on what we thought, right? So, are there any other thoughts? Would anybody else like to speak? Raise your hand, and I'll call on you right now. Paul, we can just move along.
Mr. Chairman, I believe someone said they wanted to speak. Laura Videm.
I didn't see that on here, but Laura, are you out there?
Yes, I am, thank you. I'm the other.
I apologize, I didn't see.
Oh, that's okay, that's okay. I typed it while Sherry was speaking so eloquently. I'm another one of the proponents of this article, and I just, I also wanted to address a couple of things, in particular, what Mr. Runyon was speaking about, about using in-house people. And I've been an educator for over two decades, and I'm in a very diverse community, even more diverse than Burlington, and it's very hard to do this work from the inside, from an inside position. We really need someone to come in who can start to build some relationships with the staff, but can also look at our systems from a very objective place, and tell the district where things are not working, where the inequities may exist, and always go back to that values conversation that Mr. Priest was mentioning. And I think that's really, really important, that I don't believe we currently have people in-house who are trained to do this work, especially when 96% of the teaching staff is white, and we have 35% of our students are students of color. And so we don't have those people who have the experiences to be able to connect with our staff and our students in a way that really drives the conversations forward. So I think that is, that's just an important aspect to think about. I understand the financial, the financial pieces of it, but I also, from a value standpoint, if we don't make a decision now, it just keeps getting pushed further and further. And then the applicant pool, quite honestly, is going to get smaller and smaller, because this is not, this is something that many districts are looking to do, and we want to have the most qualified people out there, and the pool's going to get that much smaller if we wait that much longer. So I just wanted to say those things from an educator's standpoint, that we really, that educators really need to, need help to do this. It's not something that can be an add-on to what teachers and staff are already doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate that. Did I miss anybody else? Okay, so this isn't, this isn't up for a vote, it's just up for discussion. I think that everybody did a good job on both sides of it, and we'll have to see what Town Meeting decides for us. We all know they're the governing body. All right, so thank you, everybody. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next two items are both public hearings related to liquor licensing. We're asking the board to continue them to a date in the future. So the first one up is the Delphusco's liquor license. As you may imagine, there hasn't been a lot of updates happening in the restaurant industry, so we're having some difficulty with, you know, finding a new person for that license pre-pandemic, and it's become very, very difficult since the pandemic started. So we're going to request that the board continue this hearing to October 26th at 6:30 or later, I think is what Betty had suggested. Betty, please chime in if that's not correct. Okay, I think that's the date, October 26th at 6:30 or later, if we could get the board to consider making that motion.
May I ask a question before we do that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Why only a month? Do we anticipate things are going to change that quick, or should we give it through the end of the year or something like that, so we don't have them coming back every month?
Well, I think what was suggested to us is we want to provide them and keep their feet to the fire, as opposed to, you know, sometimes after a few months, it sort of slips away from our consciousness, and the license is still out there. So in an effort to make sure that the applicant is working very hard to try to find a way to dispose of their license and bring it back onto the town, we wanted to continuously do this. Another reason I know, and Betty had mentioned this earlier, is the renewals for next year are up again, so for some of these licenses, you know, it's going to be the second time through where we've gone through a renewal process, and they haven't come up with a way to dispose of the license. So I'll defer to Betty if she has anything she would like to add on that.
Okay. Joe, as the, Mr. Chairman, as the two members with the co-chair for the alcohol licenses, maybe you and I should meet with Paul and Betty just to go over some of these things with the renewals coming up, just to see where we stand on this.
I couldn't agree with you more, Bob. Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Paul.
Okay, so at this point, I'm going to need a motion to continue this until October 26th at 6:30.
No move.
No move, and seconded by Mike. A roll call vote, please. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's the first one. Betty, 500. I believe we have two more, Paul.
The next public hearing, Mr. Chairman, is for Burlington Bear Works, and we request the same continuance, the same date, 6:30 or later, please.
Are you motion on that, gentlemen?
No made.
Same two, Bob and Mike again. We need a roll call vote once again. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda, yes. We're going to need a separate sheet of paper for their continuance. Sorry.
It's a sheet.
Yeah, basically. So that's it for the two alcohol public hearings. Paul, we can move right along now with the grant of location. That's a public hearing, it's a new one.
Yes, sir, and it is 6:42 by my recollection, so I believe that we had this one slated for 6:40, so we can continue on with this.
Yes, sir.
If I could ask Selectmen Tigges to read the public hearing ad, so we can get started?
Certainly, certainly. Please be advised that the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 28th, 2020, at or after, it says 6:30 here, during a WebEx online meeting. The link to join this meeting is at the end of this notice. Sienna Engineering Group Incorporated has submitted an application on behalf of TC Systems Incorporated, an affiliate of AT&amp;T, to request consideration of approval from the Town of Burlington Board of Selectmen to trench, lay, maintain, and operate underground fiber optic cables under the surface in the public way, along the area of Burlington Mall Road and District Ave, and along the area of Burlington Mall Road, near the intersection of Burlington Mall Road and 42 Burlington Mall Road, all as submitted the plans for proposed conduit placement. Plans for this request may be found at the Board of Selectmen's office website page at Burlington.org, under Town Government Administration Selectmen, General Information and Public Hearings, and the Board of Selectmen public hearings are printed in the Burlington Daily Times, may also be downloaded from the following site, masspublicnotices.org.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Welcome.
So I believe we have Adam is here.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask that you take a vote to open the public hearing, please?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Roll call, please.
Absolutely. Gentlemen, need a motion to open public hearing. By Jimmy and Nick, we're going to go to the roll call vote. Bob?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Hey, yes. So somebody here for the grant of location from Burlington Mall? Do this?
Yeah, hi, this is Adam Peller from Sienna Engineering Group, representing TC Systems for this edition. Thank you for the introduction and description of the work. If anyone has any questions about, you know, construction or anything, I'd be happy to help.
Okay, let me go through the list there. Mr. Runyon, any questions?
Just the note from Engineering that, I'm sure Adam has a copy of it, that they plan on paving Mall Road, and so your work needs to be completed this fall?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, that's the plan.
Okay.
Mr. Priest? Nick? About that? All right, I'm going to go to, Mr.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, no questions, I was just, I couldn't get myself on mute.
Okay. Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Adam, how long do you think this will take as far as number of days, number of weeks?
So each individual location shouldn't be more than two to three days per each spot. I'm not positive if we'll have two separate crews working at the same time. I would think that it'll be, you know, do the one location and then move up the street to do the other, so total construction may be, you know, a week or week and a half.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, my only concern- Okay. Mr. Chairman, my only concern was, in a normal year, Mall Road gets busy during certain times. And I don't think that'll be an issue this year. I can't say for sure. But my only concern was potential traffic backup on the Mall Road at certain times throughout the year. Other than that, I'm all set.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hogan?
No. Yeah, the only issue I had also was the work that's going to be done next year on Mall Road, and the emphasis on getting this work done. And if there are any other projects that are going to be going on on Mall Road, we probably need to get the word out that those individuals need to get the work done also. Because, you know, I can't see us approving cutting up Mall Road after going through all the work to get it paved. Thank you.
Absolutely. Good point, Bob. Okay, it's a public hearing. So is anybody out there would like to speak on this issue? This agenda item? Paul, do you have anybody? Or I don't see anybody new on here.
I don't see anybody, Mr. Chairman. I will ask Betty or Nick if there's any questions or comments on Facebook Live.
Nothing as of this moment.
They're going to confer with engineering? The town hall, coming to town hall, right? Right, Betty? Okay. I have Betty very close by today. I need her help. So we're all set with everything.
And if there's nothing else, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We close the public hearing.
Motion by Bob, seconded by?
Second.
Whoever that was?
Nick.
I think it was Nick. All right. So roll call vote on closing the public hearing. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So public hearing is closed. Now I need a motion on the grant of location at Mall Road. That is by Mike and seconded by Jimmy. Once again, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini, yes. So 500 on that, Betty. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Now we have another public hearing coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was scheduled for 6:45. So if I could ask for selectmen Tigges to read the advertisement into the record.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Absolutely.
Okay, please be advised, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 28, 2020, at or after 6:45 PM during a WebEx online meeting. The link to join the meeting is at the end of this notice. It's for the placement of one J O pole, P 235 over four on the westerly side of Martin Street, to appoint approximately 71 feet southerly from existing pole, P 235 over three, located on the westerly side of Whitney Street, and approximately 111 feet northerly from existing pole, P 236 over one, located on the northerly side of Martin Street. Plans for this request may be found at the Board of Selectmen's website page at Burlington.org, under Town Government Administration Selectmen General Information and Public Hearings. Board of Selectmen public notices are printed in the Burlington Daily Times Chronicle, and may also be downloaded from the following site, masspublicnotices.org.
Thank you, Jim. Fantastic. Okay, at this time, we're going to need a motion to open the public hearing.
No movement.
Motion by Bob, seconded by Mr. Priest. Roll call vote. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Yes. And myself, yes. So the public hearing is open. Paul, would you like to go with the grant of location for this?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, do we have our representatives from Verizon here?
I was looking for William Wallace. Is he here? I don't think anybody's here, Paul.
I'm the homeowner, John Tucci. Represent?
Thank you, John. How are you?
Hi, how are you?
Good. Do we have anybody from Verizon here to speak on this? Paul, seems like we have no one from Verizon. Do you want to?
Sure. Mr. Tucci, do you want to tell us about the project? And I know that the Selectmen have a map in the pole locations within their backup materials. So we should be able to continue on. Just for the board's clarification, there were no comments from the engineering department on this one. So no issues with with what they're trying to do.
Yeah, so I think it's probably Josh from Verizon. He's the field engineer. I don't know if he's the representative that's supposed to be at this meeting. But I don't know if you're familiar with Martin Street, but it's kind of on the corner. We're the only house on the street, kind of at the corner of Whitney and Martin that goes around to Gibson, and then on the other side to Stewart Street. So right now, the existing pole is in our property. And we're doing a construction remodeling project, adding on a garage on that side of the street, kind of on the Whitney side of the street. So we're proposing just moving that pole seven feet over to make additional room for the driveway for the two-car garage. So it'll be taken off of our property and put into the right-of-way on the town.
One question, Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Yes.
John, is it being put on the sidewalk? And?
No, there's no sidewalk here. I don't know if you're familiar, maybe Mr. Hogan would be familiar with it. Martin Street used to be a private way. And my corner property and the property on Gibson and Martin, on that corner property, owned halfway into the street. And the people on Geddick at their rear yards own halfway into the street of Martin. At some point, Martin Street was turned into a public way by previous homeowner request. So it was turned into a public way. And the town agreed to plow it and maintain it and deliver mail and garbage.
But my question is, when the pole is moved, and I apologize for not being clear, is it being put anywhere that it's going to be in anybody else's way?
No, no, it's being put into the side yard. So there's no sidewalk there.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have, I have to apologize for laughing because you said that the town allowed them to do the mail and the trash the way it came out. So they were bringing both of them to your house. And I just came out the wrong way, and I was laughing. So I apologize for that. Thank you. Who else would like to speak on this? Mr. Tigges, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Probably Selectmen Runyon and I are probably very familiar with this area. But it's probably one of the most remote locations in town. If, if, if how many, if two cars pass through that area a day, that's a lot, I would, I would think, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Tucci. But it's a very remote area. I don't see this impacting anyone. So I have absolutely no issues with this.
Mr. Priest, Mr. Paul, Mike's got his hands up. Go ahead. Sorry. Sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking at the plan submitted by Verizon, the existing pole is to remain. I don't know, Mr. Tucci, if that's not probably, it's not your understanding, is it? The pole's supposed to be moved. But according to the plan they submitted to us, the existing pole is to remain.
They're going to be, they're installing a new pole, seven feet in the direction towards Stewart Street, which is basically, if I'm correct, kind of northeast direction, more towards Stewart Street. And then they'll liven up that pole and take down the existing pole.
Okay, according to, again, I'm only going by the drawings that were submitted. In their notes, it says that those existing poles to remain, and moving at 71 feet. I just hope we're on the same page. I'm hoping you're getting what you're asked for. I just wanted to be sure.
I don't see that, I don't have that paperwork in front of me. But I confirmed it with, so Verizon, I guess, owns the pole. They leased it, they lease it to Eversource. So I guess the way it works is that the field engineer has to coordinate with the field engineer from Eversource. So Verizon will install the pole. And Jay Berardi, who's a Burlington resident, he's the designer kind of coordinator for Eversource, then we'll coordinate and move and liven up the pole. But it's, we staked it, it's seven feet away from the existing pole.
Mike, you're on mute.
I'm sorry. I just know it's been our experience, Mr. Tucci. I just want you to be aware. Anytime you have to move a pole, it's easier said than done. You've got half a dozen different utilities that all have to coordinate to get their stuff off there. And I, you know, I don't know how soon you want to get your garage. But you need to stay on top. Because I have no problem doing it. I just want to make sure you're aware of some of the challenges.
Yeah, I mean, they're aware, they're ready, they're ready to put the new pole in next week.
Mr. Tucci, I can't hear anything you're saying.
We've kind of been going through this for three months, back and forth with them. So they kind of assured me that, you know, the engineering department would review it. And if they approved it, then they could start. I don't know why they weren't aware that it had to go through the Selectmen's Office. I'm sure they worked in town before. So I was expecting them to install it at the beginning of September. But then engineering put it to Betty, and, you know, she said I had to go through the Selectmen's Office.
Okay, I, you know, I support you. And I just want to make sure everything goes smoothly for you. So I'll leave it at that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I made this interesting, I'm going to try something for a second here to share my screen. Can everybody see?
What did you?
I know. I couldn't unmute myself earlier, and now I'm sharing screen. So, Mr. Tucci, if you could help me out here. So we see existing pole down here by the 420, number nine Geddick Road parcel. We see a new pole be placed here on Martin Street, P 235-4. And then we see the other existing pole, P 235-3. Can you walk us through with this visual what's happening?
So that must be a typo, because it's only seven feet. It's not 71 feet. So it's basically being moved one fence section in the direction towards Stewart Street.
Okay, so you're saying that the new, the pole marked new here in the middle currently exists? Or that the existing pole up on the top of the page here is being moved further towards Stewart Street?
Yeah, the one where it's marked new pole is the existing pole.
Is this the whole plan?
But it's, it's actually not. If you look at where the 71 is?
Yep.
Where's the 71 feet? That's more where the existing pole is. And we're moving it seven feet in the direction towards Stewart Street.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chairman, with the, with the lack of Verizon representation, the confusion in the schematic, I would move that we continue this public hearing until we can get this resolved.
Gentlemen, well, there we go. Now everyone's back again. I kind of agree with you, Nick, because it seems like they don't really have the plan set up the way that we need to approve it. I know that Mr. Tucci is waiting patiently to get this pole moved. But we have a meeting in two weeks. We can do it at that point, right? So that would be, I think that would be the best thing. And then Mr. Tucci understands that now the pole is gone, and you're going to get a letter from them on his behalf to say that other pole's going to be removed. That just benefits him, not us, benefits him. So Paul, how do we go about this? Do we go just continue it? Or do we need to close, open the, we've already opened the public meeting. So now we close it or leave it open?
Leave it open.
Leave it open.
Can I, can I?
Yes, go ahead, sir. Yes.
So we were supposed to be on the September 14 meeting, but I guess we missed the advertising deadline by two hours.
Okay.
You know, and I've been trying to wait to get this pole moved since the beginning of September. I'm kind of living, living in the house now with my family. And it's a major renovation where now we're going to kind of be put into, you know, as October, October comes into the colder months, we're basically living in a, in a shell of a house now. And my electrician can't give us any power until those, those poles are moved, as far as getting the new service on that side of the house.
Great. Mr. Runyon, have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I did, Joe. Thanks. Paul, is there any way of staff working with Mr. Tucci and try to expedite this rather than wait till the next Selectmen's meeting?
Yes, Mr. Marini, I can say that if you were to approve it tonight, like I said, the way I'm reading the map, it looks as though the pole that's being moved isn't on there. It looks like there is a pole 71 feet this way and another pole 111 feet. And within that little, little map area there, it looks like the pole that's there, they're showing the new location of it. That's how I'm reading the map anyway. And I apologize, Mr. Tucci, if that's not sort of how it looks outside your window. But I believe that if the board were to approve this tonight, we can, we can go through this with Tom Hayes tomorrow and get some answers for Mr. Tucci.
Well, my personal opinion is, before anyone jumps on this, is I, we're here to protect the resident on this. So I want to make sure that he's okay with what we're going to do. And I'm sure Mr. Hayes and he'll be able to handle this for him at this point. To make sure that other pole's removed and to make sure that it's going where it's supposed to be going. The map is kind of messed up. One second, Mr. Priest. So I want to make sure that the resident is not getting imboozled on this. Bad choice of words, but that's what I think. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul, if we approve this tonight, you know, and the plans need to be different than what we're approving, you know, I just don't want Verizon to try and hold us or the homeowner in a position where, you know, like the chairman said, the homeowner isn't getting what they they need. I mean, especially if this is coming close to a new garage that they're also putting in, you know, making sure there's enough clearance and all that fun jazz. So, I mean, I'm happy to approve this, to keep it moving so they aren't stuck with no power. But I also don't want to put also the homeowner in a bad position moving down the road. And a complete side note, Mr. Tucci, I drove in past the, the work you're doing to your home, and it's absolutely beautiful. So just completely side note, I just want to mark that I drive past there quite frequently. But Paul, I just, I, the question to you, I guess.
So first for me, Selectmen Priest, what can say? And Betty can confirm this. I think we have a meeting next week as well. So it's only a week away, if that's, you know, more acceptable to continue for a week.
But it seems like we're pretty sure that Mr., oh, I lost all thought there. Across the way. And take a look at it tomorrow if we did approve this tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I just jump in. To Nick's point, I kind of, we've been talking, Mr. Tucci was talking about two poles. Yet there are three poles on the drawing. You know, we need to make clarification about that also, just to make sure that the right poles are being moved, the right poles are being taken away, and if they shouldn't be taken away, that they're left there.
Yeah, there's, there's basically one, there's a, there's a pole at the corner of Stewart and Whitney, which is basically on the property of a new kind of construction house that was built two years ago. And then there's And then there's the pole that's on my, my property, but I'm just surprised because we kind of went back and forth with Verizon and uh, Eversource and uh, you know, they don't have a representative here tonight. And, you know, I'm an architect by trade and I kind of, you know, can read the drawing pretty accurately and, you know, where the pole is, the existing pole is kind of where the seventy-one foot is marked and we're moving it seven feet in that uh, direction towards Stewart Street. So those, uh, Verizon is basically gonna put the new pole and then Eversource will liven up that new pole and discard of the other, the other pole. Um, so I don't know, you know, Mr. Hayes can work through it, um, or I can talk to Jay Bararty, who probably submitted the plan and uh, get that to him right away and correct it.
Okay, um, Mr. Sagarino, can Mr. Hayes work through this tomorrow? If this is, if this goes through tonight to be approved?
Yes.
Yes. Gentlemen, you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Everyone's comfortable with that? Mr. Hayes, Mr. Bararty, who's a Burlington resident that we all know, uh, I'm sure the two of them can work it right out. We approve this plan that... Okay, so now we have the uh, uh, public meeting. Is there anybody out there to speak on this issue? Paul, anybody call in for it? No? Is there anybody out there for, on the other side of it? No? Betty, do we have anybody? No? Okay, so I'm gonna need a motion to close the public hearing? So moved and seconded by... Mr. Runyon? Okay, uh, roll call vote, gentlemen. Mr. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Randy, public hearing is now closed. Uh, gentlemen, does somebody want to make a motion on this?
I'll make the motion that uh, we make this approval condition on uh, Tom Hayes's approval that what we've been talking about tonight uh, is what the plan is going to look like and that they can get that rectified.
Thank you, Paul. Seconded by Mike. Gentlemen, once again, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Randy, yes?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, I was gonna ask Mr. Sagarino, would he be able, him or, or would he, or Betty be able to just do a quick summary of our discussion for Mr. Hayes to review? In other words, so he'll know what we talked about.
Yes, Selectman Tigges, I'll, I'll take a ride up there with Tom, our morning.
Thank you. Okay, uh, so you got a five zero zero, Betty. Uh, okay, thank you. Uh, this, uh, good luck tomorrow with everything and good luck with the new addition onto the house. Okay. All I heard was thank you and everything else was too far away. All right, we're good. All right, thank you. Okay, uh, that's all of our public hearings for the night. So now we have, Paul, move right along?
Melissa's on.
Hi, Melissa. You want to take her now? We wish you were supposed to go first?
Sure.
Okay. Hi, Melissa.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. My background is odd and I don't, can't seem to change it to a clear background. So just so you know, um, okay.
Kind of looks like something out of a sci-fi movie.
I know, it looks spooky. I can see it too.
It's Halloween, we'll let it go.
Yes, uh, Eve, one more month. Um, well, I'm coming here to update on um, our outdoor seating and our process that we've been going through kind of as a response to uh, the COVID and shutdown. So as many of you know, uh, the governor had ordered, um, it was order number thirty-five that allowed for us to set up a system to purely facilitate the outdoor seating and some other requests that have come in response to the shutdown in order to maintain distance. And a lot of that was um, around restaurants and hospitality to be seated outdoors. So our task force that um, included police, fire, planning, building, and Board of Health met, ha- have been meeting regularly on Mondays at twelve-thirty to advance these proposals. Um, but if you recall, order thirty-five came, anything that we per- permitted was really coming to an end um, November first. So a lot of communities put together kind of some, a coalition and had um, worked at least to express their concern to the gov- governor. And um, in the process, I think, you know, I know through um, Ken Gordon and through some other people that um, it made a, it made a difference. So then a week and a half ago, the governor ordered, it was almost two weeks ago now, um, the governor ordered um, order number fifty, which is, which um, essentially allows for all the outdoor seating to be continued for sixty days beyond the end of the state of emergency. So we're assuming that goes in, well into next year. Um, we don't have a date, but that gives a lot of the flexibility needed for restaurants and the hospitality. And what we were looking for to um, was really to give the board um, an update on that. Uh, the task force fully supports um, being in line with the state recommendation for that deadline, which is the sixty days after the state of emergency. And um, if we receive additional requests from um, restaurants, um, the task force would like to proceed with granting that extension.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Melissa. Um, Nick, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I guess my biggest question is what uh, what is the plan for the winter?
So at this point, we haven't had any requests come in. There's been several um, ideas that have been proposed, um, including tents that may have four sides with some heating mechanism that blows in the heat versus kind of the propane heaters that are, um, that you see, the patio kind of propane heaters, so it blow into the tent. Um, we've also seen um, proposals, these are kind of more like concepts of those igloos. I don't know if anyone has seen those, they're kind of clear igloos that are set outside. Um, fire hasn't seen any proposal per se on that, um, but we've kind of heard that that's kind of a theme going ar- around. Um, so at this point, there's a lot of consternation that the restaurants, you know, are gonna really struggle through the winter, um, given the difficulty of creating kind of accommodating conditions, you know, outside.
Yeah, it's, it's funny because you, you say, you know, a tent with four sides, just it's like, well, you know, is that any better than being in a building? Um, you know?
Yeah.
There's a certain sense of irony to it, I guess, but um, I guess, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, doing whatever we can to help the restaurants maintain the winter knowing that it's gonna be uh, rough. Not necessarily the weather, but obviously just, you know, the state of things continuing into um, you know, colder, colder months. Um, is there, I mean, can we, if, if you haven't heard anything yet, i- is there any, you know, um, uh, ask amongst, you know, uh, restaurateurs around uh, providing delivery services through the, the winter months as opposed to folks, you know, uh, frequenting establishments?
Yes, I mean, I think what we've seen are the one, the restaurants that have, you know, kind of had more wherewithal or had already come through with their apps, um, that had already been able to pivot with technology, um, have been doing that and will continue to do that through the winter. Um, it's really the, you know, maintaining staff and keeping the uh, you know, the turnover on the table. So what um, a four-sided tent would do is allow for the six feet, which reduces that, you know, table density inside a restaurant, but allows it to be essentially more spread out. Um, and Border Cafe would probably be the one that's, you know, been talking, talking to us the most. And we think if they can be kind of like our, you know, a pilot version, we can really set that up um, in a safe way, that we, that might be a model for other restaurants.
Okay, great, thank you. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Runyon?
All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, I was kind of out and about this weekend and um, had dinner at a couple of establishments in town and uh, business uh, appeared to be pretty robust. I drove by Border Cafe actually and I think I saw three tents out there. Um, so I know it's not perfect, but uh, it's, it's good to see that uh, people are uh, getting out and uh, visiting our, our restaurants in town. What I wanted to talk about, Melissa, is uh, the new seating rule, uh, the governor announced over the weekend. Uh, I have no problem with extending our current rules for outside dining, um, but are we also adopting the new seating rule? Because I, I have a problem with uh, the rule of uh, allowing ten at a table indoors. Um, uh, I'm really reluctant to approve that. So I don't know if by approving the extension tonight, are we also approving the, the new seating rules?
Um, no, you're not. That's, they would be separate. Um, the new rules is I, we wa- we talked about it at the task force um, today and the Board of Health seems comfortable with it, um, Selectman Runyon. So they feel that there still needs to be, you know, the six feet apart at different um, you know, groupings, if you will. Um, they've been monitoring that and they felt like most of the restaurants have been pretty compliant with the six feet. You know, allowing an- another four individuals at the table, they didn't really comment on it. They felt like, you know, they're trying to just abide by the state guidelines and if that's been revised, they were going forward on that. Um, and that's how we kind of, that's what we discussed today.
So, so at, at what point are we gonna address the number of seats allowed indoors?
I, 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 what I could do is look into um, how communities have dealt with that if we want to explore um, that as an option. I think generally um, most communities have been going and following state guidelines. So I have to look into how we would make ours a little bit more, um, you know, kind of a little more strict, if you will, um, and how we implement that.
Uh, because I, because some of the chatter I've heard over the weekend, um, that these restaurants are assuming that as of today, they can move ten people to a table. Um, I'd just like some clarity on that and um, do they need permission to do that before, you know, before they implement it?
Mr. Sagarino, go ahead.
Uh, Selectman Runyon, um, I agree with Melissa. Uh, to date, the town's been following the governor's orders um, as, as it relates to this. Uh, we can certainly look, there were a couple of communities that haven't. I think Somerville and Boston, uh, but, so we can sort of look into um, sort of how a community like us would uh, offer a different guideline other than what the state has. And I'm not sure if that's something that comes from the Board of Selectmen or is that something that comes from the Board of Health. I'm, I'm not exactly certain on that. But we can certainly look into it um, um, for the board before the next meeting.
Thank you, Michael? Okay. Mr. Hogan?
Um, yeah, th- these, these are difficult times, uh, you know, a lot of what we're doing these days are difficult. Um, Nancy and I have been out in about, just like uh, Michael and uh, Lisa, um, trying to uh, spread the wealth, so to speak. Uh, we've been eating outside um, for the last month or two. Um, it, it's, you know, I know that they want, you know, with the cold weather, they're gonna want to move people inside. Um, I, I've talked to a lot of people and a lot of people still aren't ready for that. Um, but I have, I have no objection to um, extending uh, the timeframe. Uh, but like Michael says, we need to be careful what we're voting on to make sure we're not opening Pandora's box on a lot of other issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I like, I, uh, whatever we can do as a town to help our businesses benefit is something I'm always in favor of and I know other board members are as well. Um, the way I see this is the four-sided tents, yeah, granted, it's, it's enclosed, but the restaurant is enclosed as well. So it's with the uh, the concept, at least the way I look at it, of an enclosed tent area or, or gazebo area, whatever you wanna call it, um, canopy area, it's just adding more floor space, for lack of better terms, to the dining area. So it's not, I, granted, I think an open area is better, but if we're allowing, if they're allowed to seat inside a restaurant, then I don't see that it's any different by allowing seating in a, in enclosed canopy. You're just allowing the restaurant to have uh, more tables and more floor space to space them out further. So I'm not against, I, I like that idea. It's, it, you know, whatever we can do for the businesses to keep them going as long as they can, I'm definitely in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Tigges. Uh, Melissa, real quick, I'll go over it. So everybody said just about everything that, that we need to on this issue. Uh, Mr. Runyon is a little bit opposed to having ten people at a, at a seating, which I can understand. Uh, a lot of this comes down to uh, having these businesses get back on their feet. There are some that are thriving pretty good, not anywhere close to what they should be. They're probably at sixty percent. They should be at a hundred percent uh, money-wise and capacity-wise. Uh, I think that it's also up to the individuals that are going out for the purpose. Uh, they have to understand that there are rules and regulations, there are things that have been put in place for their safety, just as well as the employees' safeties, as far as the cooks and everyone else in the place. So it's a catch-22 where we have all these restaurants in town, they can all survive, they're all doing well, but it's also up to us as individuals, not, speaking of the Board of Selectmen, just as an individual, when I go to a restaurant, to maybe bring my own San Francisco, maybe to bring something with me, to be on the cautious side myself. Um, if, you know, are they gonna have tents outside? What's the difference between a tent and being inside the building? You know what I mean? There's a million questions to have here. But whatever it takes, my personal opinion is, whatever it takes for these businesses to get back on track, that's what I need to do at my end, right? Whatever I can do to help them. So that's where I stand on this. I just want to say, that's all I can say right now. Thank you. Melissa?
So, so as I understand it then, with the extension, um, there's general agreement that, you know, um, a restaurant wants to come to us to extend um, their outdoor seating, um, we'd be comfortable with that. Um, and what, I think what we could do with the other piece, the new order that's been augmented for the table seating, um, I think Paul and I could just look at um, how that's implemented if we want to explore um, keeping that at a tighter number, um, and we could come back to the board. Is that right, Paul?
Yes, that would be my recommendation to allow Melissa and I to look into that with Town Council and just to sort of understand what direction, if any, we can do as a board or is this uh, something that falls under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health? Again, I'm not exactly sure uh, where it falls. To date, uh, the town of Burlington has been uh, following uh, Governor Baker's orders in, in this regard, um, as, as the state reopens. So we'd have to look into how we would go about doing something different if that is something that the board wishes to do.
So Paul, let me ask a quick question. You're, you're looking for an approval here? Approval on what the state already told us we could do? Is that what we're trying to do?
Yeah, just, just to reiterate for the board, um, as you're aware that Melissa's been working with the task force and departments and members from other um, elected bodies and employees in, in order to uh, facilitate uh, the reopening of, of all entities in the town under the state guidelines. So she wanted to give you an update about what was going on and just to, to make sure that you got a sense of the board in terms of, you know, would you be willing to extend, um, you know, in, in accordance with the governor's orders? So we're just look, she was just looking for a sense of the board and just to let you know that this is something that her task force will be working on in the upcoming weeks. she was just looking for a sense of the board and just to let you know that this is something that her task force will be working on in the upcoming weeks.
Okay, so Melissa, let me ask you real quick. Are you, are you happy with with your answers tonight and um, to move forward and go on from here?
Yes.
Okay. So this isn't up for a vote. It says approval, but there's really no vote on this. Right?
Right.
Okay. All right. Okay, gentlemen, any other, any other comments from anybody? Everyone shaking their head no right now? Okay. Melissa, thank you so much for all the time and effort you put into this. Uh, we will be, we will be back as a town. We'll all be out to dinner.
Okay.
Maybe at the same time at the same restaurant. How's that? We'll all go out.
That'd be nice. Um, thank you, and thanks for your flexibility on the agenda. Appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, uh, where are we now?
Last two licenses.
Yep, there we go. Paul?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have a request uh, from a Burlington business to transfer its class two uh, used car um, license um, to his residential address. Uh, Mr. Fuccioni, as you're aware from our last meeting, uh, has sold his property and um, I I believe he is here to speak on the subject. Uh, but the, the, the ask is to transfer the license uh, from uh, his existing business location uh, to utilize his home address as a license. Um, we have comments from various departments on that as well that we can get into, but I think it would be, we could ask Mr. Fuccioni to uh, address the board on this at at the present time.
Hello?
Yep.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, I've been down here with this license for probably about thirty-five years now. And because I sold the property, I want to uh, continue to be able to work the auctions and uh, transfer licenses legally. And this is why uh, if I move it to my house, it'll be like a a paperwork thing only.
Okay. I, I, do you have anything else for us, or is that it?
No, that, that, that's it. It's it's pretty, pretty straightforward. I I spoke to the building inspector and he says he's done this in the past and he didn't have a problem with it. I I spoke to John Clancy last week.
Okay. Um, there was a few questions that you were asked by Town Council, I believe, and you've got to keep everything, everything on your property? There's never going to be any cars there or?
No, there'll be, there'll be, there'll be nothing there for sale. There'll be no transactions there. Everything will be done. Uh, you know, right now, all the auctions are being done on the computer at home. They're not live auctions anymore like it used to be in the old days. Uh, everything now is, you could be bidding on a car and it could be somebody in Dallas, Texas bidding against you. Uh, so it's all off the computer and it's not, it's not like it was in the old days. And I don't think it'll ever go back to that either.
All right, well, let me just go over the board here. Mr. Hogan, any questions?
I I do have one. Um, it might seem minor, but we did have an issue in town several years ago with a gentleman who had a class two license um, and was storing vehicles at another site. So I would like to just add that even though it says twenty Upland, there can be no cars at twenty Upland. I would also like to say, or any other location in Burlington. Or that, you know, there are no cars being hidden in the back of a gas station or?
No, 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 no problem with that at all.
Thank you.
Good. Uh, Mr. Tigges?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess car auction business has gone remote, like uh, a lot of jobs, so um, I have, I have no issue with this at all as presented.
Okay. Mr. Runyon?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah. Um, it's unusual, um, in my opinion, um, for 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 a number of reasons. Um, one of which, you know, all of our class two license holders are um, uh, you know, each year, the compliance officer goes out there and makes sure that they're doing business the way they're supposed to be doing business. Um, in 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 this instance, um, you know, our our compliance officer would have to drive out to Framingham or Boricca or Woburn um, to do their, to do their check. Um, the the biggest concern I have here is uh, what we're asking for here is the the Burlington Board of Selectmen to authorize uh, uh, the applicant to park cars in Boricca and in Framingham. Now, I don't think any of us would be very pleased if the Boricca Board of Selectmen or the Framingham City Council issued a license to someone to store cars in Burlington. And that's, that's, it's, that's exactly what we're doing here. I'd I'd be opposed um, to this transfer.
They are. That's where the kind of, they keep them there. They keep thousands of them there.
Hold on. Uh, Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Moretti. Um, I don't think I have any questions. I I um, I understand where where Selectman Runyon is coming from. Um, this concerns, uh, you know, I, I guess, is this going to put uh, any kind of burden on our current staff, uh, Paul? Um, you know, to have to go and I guess, was it once a year, twice a year, confirm uh, you know, cars are parked at these auction uh, lots?
Uh, Mr. Clancy and, Mr. Clancy had reported that this is past practice and we have I had a couple of licenses like this in the past. So he did not indicate that it would be an administrative burden. Uh, he just did point out to make the approval uh, conditional on not storing any vehicles at at the property. Um, the police department also reported that they had no issues um, with the license holder um, over the past several years at all. So um, that's the feedback that we got from the departments. And again, Mr. Clancy himself um, had indicated that this has been done in the past.
Okay. Um, then I do agree with with uh, Selectman Hogan in saying that I think it should be extended to uh, townwide that we we don't want. Um, I mean, not that we don't, you know, uh, trust you, sir. Uh, you know, I think it's a matter of, you know, covering our own bases here. Um, but I agree with 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 Selectman Hogan on that front. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, Mr. Fuccioli, uh, the two locations that you're asking for these, are these, are these sites auctions?
Yes.
Is that where you're going to keep the cars at?
Yes.
The Boricca auction site, the Framingham auction site?
Correct. That's the uh, Lineway Auto Auction in uh, Boricca. And the other one is in Framingham, which is the Adessa Auto Auction.
Okay, and that, and those two sites are strictly auction sites? And not, and you can, so what you would do is you would keep your car down there and you'd buy it on a, I'm just going with.
And then?
I'd buy it on a Thursday and then on Friday, uh, somebody would come pick it up from there from the auction site. You wouldn't be bringing the car back to Burlington and have to do all the transactions here, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Uh, gentlemen, I need to, uh, does there anybody else have any more comments?
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I have one other thing. Um, for the first time, we've been hearing a lot of the term past practice. Um, and 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 I'm going to vote to approve Mr. Fuccioli, but in the future, can we do something about putting, putting this down as a law or regulation? Uh, I'm not comfortable with the past practice as a reason for doing things. Um, so maybe we can put some, put the wording down and get this passed as a legitimate uh, uh, thing uh, and not just have it as past practice.
Paul, did you get that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So now I'm going to look for a motion to approve or disapprove.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we uh, approve the transfer uh, to uh, a- a- as it's been worded, but to add the words, or any other location in Burlington uh, to make sure that there are no other cars on Upland or anywhere else uh, for this license.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Um, okay, we'll just go to the vote now. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
No.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti, yes. So four zero, four one zero bag. Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Discussion. Uh, next item, Paul.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as an update uh, to the board and to the the public at large, um, the board had, due to COVID, um, extended uh, the use of plastic bags in town uh, through September thirtieth. Uh, that deadline is fast approaching uh, on Wednesday. So uh, we just want to just remind the board and let the public at large know that um, the bag ban, the plastic bag ban, bag ban will be back into effect uh, starting on October first. So uh, please let us know. Um, hopefully all the businesses have been working down the supply that they have had. Uh, but the uh, extension that was granted by the Selectmen is expiring.
Very much. That's uh, good to know. We'll be out to paper pretty soon. Uh, okay, now we're going to do the uh, minutes approval. We're going to do all together tonight. So we have June twenty-second, July twentieth, August tenth, and September fourteenth, if you all read the email that you got this morning.
So those are the only four?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of June twenty-second, July twentieth, August tenth, and September fourteenth, all of twenty twenty.
Motion Bob, seconded by Mr. Priest. Uh, roll call, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Myself, yes. We're all set, Betty. Uh, we'll go to subcommittee reports. We'll start with Mr. Runyon.
Uh, no, sir, nothing tonight.
Okay. Mr. Hogan?
No, not tonight.
Not tonight. Oh, well, it could be on a roll. Mr. Tigges?
Well, I just want to applaud quickly. Sorry, but the fire department did a great job. On September fifteenth, there was a house fire on Brookside Lane. Under the direction of Captain Tim Brown, they quickly knocked it down. Um, house unfortunately is inhabitable, but the fire department did respond uh, and was able to take that in uh, under control very quickly. I thought that needed to be mentioned. They did a great job.
Thank you very much. Is that all you have?
That's it.
That's it. Okay. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, some things I'll be bringing forward uh, at the next meeting, but nothing tonight. I actually wanted to uh, ask if Selectman Tigges had any uh, further updates on Halloween. Um, I figure it's a pertinent conversation as we only have one other meeting before Halloween, maybe, maybe two? I can't remember.
Mr. Chairman?
No. Yes, go ahead, Jimmy.
Okay, real quick, uh, uh, Director Public House, Lumina Lo was going to get back to me as soon as she got direction from the state. I know the CDC did come out with some guidelines. Um, and they've had low risk, medium risk, high risk, but uh, Director Lumina Lo has not been back to me regarding what the state's recommendations are as of this time. But I did talk with Rec Department and there's some thoughts and ideas out there that we may or may not be able to try.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Priest. Anything else?
No, sir.
No, sir. Okay. Uh, so I only have one thing and I probably got to direct it to you, Nick. Uh, I don't, you were on the committee for the uh, the sculpture park. Uh, I kind of like the dog with his little scarf on, to be honest with you, but uh, I've gotten some complaints from the residents that it's going to move across the street to the other things. And I'm like, it misses the point. It's a dog. A lot of dogs wear scarves. It's Halloween. It's got some skulls or witches, whatever it's got on it. So that's all it is. Uh, and they're thinking that it's going to go across the street to the other sculptures and they're going to get all decorated for Halloween. And they're going to get decorated for Christmas. So uh, it's probably an issue, going to be an issue somewhere along the way. I don't know what to say about it. Uh, just going on what the residents have told me. I kind of like the dog with his, I like bones. He's a nice dog. Very, very nice. Um, just kind of letting you know in case something comes up with the sculpture committee, you can kind of, I don't know who approved that, who put it on. We have any idea or they just kind of went up and did it?
I think i- i- if I had to say, I I assume it was, it was Mr. Sacks, but I I actually don't know. Uh, but thank you for relaying the information. I'll I'll pass it on to the committee and uh, you know, keep it on our radar.
I think people are a little bit nervous that the whole thing is going to end up, you know, come Christmas time, it's going to be decorated, the whole thing. Each one will have its own decoration and stuff, and I think people are nervous. I don't know. I'm just voicing an opinion on on what I was told by a few residents.
I, I, I think we have to be careful about um, intruding on the artist's uh, work and how he saw it. To start decorating it, I I think is inappropriate, uh, whether it's for Christmas and putting lights on it. I mean, the artist had an idea and a vision when he created that, and I think it changes when you start adding stuff. So I think we need to be careful. So Nick, you know, talk to the committee about somehow making sure that the message is out there. You know, the the artist has to, you know, be given the opportunity to tell us, no, they can't, because again, that's a, that's a singularly uh, important vision that artist had when they put that together.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Bob. No, Jim.
Real quick.
No.
He, he took two minutes before not to say anything. So how can you give him any more time now?
Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Sagorino, I don't know if we can inquire with the Rec Department or DPW if there's any small signage they could put up about having people not decorate them or climb on them or something like that. That's all.
That's what we need, another sign.
I will look into that, Frank and Tigges.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, one more thing I have, uh, Rec, uh, the DPW and the Rec Building is coming along very nicely. I was down there last Friday, uh, sitting on my uh, little uh, pocket lot agenda up there, watching the guys work and uh, I can't wait till we all get down there again and see how much progress has been. That's looking really, really good. Uh, that's all I have. Uh, Mr. Sagorino?
Uh, all I have to add, Mr. Chairman, again, is some more great work by uh, Public Works. Um, as as the board knows, we bought that sidewalk paving machine uh, several years ago. Um, afterwards, you know, the residents uh, clearly made their desire for more uh, sidewalk repairs known to us and uh, you know, Public Works just recently did a a big section on Fox Hill Road that came out very nice as well. We've gotten a lot of compliments on it. So if you haven't been by there, you know, swing by and check it out.
And Paul, Mr. Chairman, could I ask Paul if he could uh, give us a summary of the work, the projects that have been done and where we are with the finances, how much is left?
Uh, absolutely. We can get an update, request an update for your next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, has anybody chimed in for any of the, uh, Nick, anybody out there for us? So this is time, Paul, anybody? Nothing? Okay.
Nothing.
I think at this point I need a motion to uh, adjourn.
Oh, moved.
Oh, moved by Bob, seconded. Jim, you want to say something now? Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you. All right, motion made and seconded. Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Tigges?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti, yes. What can I have tonight, boys? Meeting adjourned.